But thank you for venturing out tonight. It is good to see all you all. We do have a mask hand sanitizer for anyone that would like some or take some with you. Senator Broxton and I had the opportunity to bring some to the beach school yesterday, so hopefully if you have little ones, they got taken care of. First off, as we're starting, if we could please start with the pledge. Please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Also, I just want to start off by saying that of course our thoughts and prayers are with everyone in Louisiana right now dealing with Hurricane Laura. Very fortunate that it was not, does not seem as severe as they had thought it was going to be, but nonetheless something we're all familiar with what they're going through. Well, good evening. I'm Commissioner Robert Bender, District 4 County Commissioner of Skimby County, and the beach is one of the parks that I serve. And so I wanted to, we've tried to make a lot of improvements out here in the last year and a half, but we have a new traffic engineer that I'm going to introduce here. We're going to go through a presentation on some of the things that we're going to do to improve it even more. We're also going to recap this past summer and talk about some of those changes that we've made. And then she also did a sidewalk, crosswalk study that we're going to go over, and then we'll open it up to questions. All of you have the comment cards are in the back. We can either collect those and reach out to you later, or if it's something you'd like to try to get addressed immediately, we can do that. I'd also like to thank the Skimby County Fire Department, Station 13, for letting us borrow their facility tonight. And Battalion Chief Brask is here. We actually had the opportunity to be here earlier this week. We're doing public safety appreciation breakfast, and so we were able to cook breakfast for the crews that were here yesterday morning. I'd say Battalion Chief, I know the crews that worked the two fires that we had out here earlier this year aren't working tonight, but I think, one, they did an excellent job responding, and also did an excellent job containing it to make sure that it didn't spread to adjoining houses, even though the second house was next to the one that burned the first time. But I know that it was, especially under those conditions, commend those guys for that. So I am going to have Christine is our new traffic engineer, and so I'm going to do a little bit of an overview, and then maybe she can step in for some of the technical comments as we get through the slides. The agenda which we've already gone over. So these are the, most of you are familiar with that. We consider a busy day on the beach to have one that has over 20,000 vehicles. Compared to last year, we have, so far we've had one more day than we did in 2019 of over 20,000. So it was, it was actually a fairly busy year. Two of those days were two of the busiest we've ever seen approaching 22,000. And this is even with 4th of July being rained out and falling on a Saturday. So the last few years we've seen where we've had three or four days that week that have been over 24,000 or 20,000. We were, we had the spike in July that sent a lot of people back. May, we had had a hurricane off the coast, so there were a lot of events that actually kept people away from the beach during the weekends, but as you can see, it was still a fairly active, active summer. There's been a lot of questions about going cashless and reducing the toll lanes from four lanes to two. That was part of engineering's recommendation, and that was approved by FDOT. And to somewhat show that a little bit, I have three scenarios up here. One was May 18th, 2019, which was our busiest day of the year in 2019. And we look at a four-hour peak period is what we really focus on when cars coming on the beach, and that's from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that day, we had 7,056 vehicles. That was the only day that I showed that during this four-hour period, we actually had 7,000 cars or more come onto the beach. So out of the 11 days that I just showed, that was the only one where 7,000 cars came in during that peak period. On July 6th, 2019, to put it in perspective, this was when we waved cars through. We didn't accept cash. We had all four lanes open. We put 69 and 84 through. And then when we had June 20th this year, we had over 7,283 cars go through, and we actually had 2,000 cars go through during the nine o'clock hour. And so nearly all of the days, I'm sorry, take that. About seven of the days this year had over 7,000 vehicles go through that four-day, that four-hour window. So we are putting more cars through an hour, and like I said, we hit 2,000 cars a number of times during the nine or 10 o'clock hour. Later in the summer, we were seeing that that nine o'clock hour was our peak period as opposed to 10 o'clock. So we have more people coming out during that period than are coming out earlier too. I've heard some comments that, well, the beach wasn't really that busy. I know I showed that it was, it was, we had more 20,000-car days. Of course, we've been way down during the week. We were down almost a little over 800 cars Monday through Friday during the weeks this year. On the weekends, we were, we were down just over, just about 130. And so we really did have, and again, that's everything that I said earlier with the hurricanes and the spike in July, that we didn't have all the cars, that we didn't have the 4th of July. So really, we did have just as many cars out here on the weekends as we have in years past, because we also saw that they were coming out earlier. Some of the other things that we've done, we did the e-toll conversion, no cash. That's gone well. The FDOT actually did not charge the 250 fee for toll-by-plate until this month due to COVID. And then some of the other things we've done to it, we have pass sales. People can get passes at our central office complex off of Fairfield. We've converted all, we took away all the red lights. So when we first put it on, as you approach the toll, they would have a red light, and then it would turn to green. We've turned them green so that no one has a tendency to stop or is reduced. We've also added some signage. We added it in the windows to keep moving, and we cleared up the clutter. So before, we had, you know, you can drive safely, the speed limit, the stop for pedestrians in the crosswalks. So we've just made it a lot cleaner and focused on the fact that you don't need to stop. As some of you also know, last year, we installed the cameras facing northbound and southbound to give people, give you all an idea of what's going on at the toll plaza, but also people that want to come out, what it looks like. It's also helped us manage the light. And part of that is, is last year, we started actually having somebody in our traffic control center on the weekends managing the traffic through Pensacola Beach. This year, we have increased the time that's green for people coming onto the beach. We didn't increase it as much as we did last year. We saw that there were some gaps that were starting to occur later on in the cycle, and so we actually reduced it from what we had last year, but we are still monitoring that on the, on the weekends. In early June, we also started giving preference to Fort Pickens at certain points in the hour, earlier than we had been before. And I'd be happy to say that I haven't gotten any texts from Rhonda Dorfman showing backups down Fort Pickens since. Early in the year, we did have some traffic accidents, and there was a car fire that, that as we were coming, as the beach was reopening in May, did impact some of those getting off of the island. But again, I think we've at least seen some, some improvements with those on Fort Pickens. And we made those changes right before we had those two rizy, really busy days in June. And again, it seemed like we didn't have that backup that we had had earlier in the year, or what we've seen in previous years. One thing that we just added, it helps us in controlling the traffic coming out of the parking lot, but we do have a camera on South Harbor that allows us to look at the parking lot. It is on our Pensacola Beach. Oh, I need to put names, I'm sorry. I turned up my names here. It gives us an opportunity to manage, to look at the parking lot, which our traffic engineer has been able to monitor. And then as, as we start working the afternoons, it allows our traffic engineer, who's working the light, to manage things a little bit better. We are looking at adding additional cameras throughout the beach to look further down Fort Pickens and also possibly at 98 and 399, so that we can see what's on the other, other side of the hump. We've had this technology, this, a lot of the data that we presented on the push for the change in not accepting cash was based on the times from Fairpoint Drive in Gulf Rees to through the light at Pensacola Beach. And so we had that information, and so we looked at ways that we can put it out on the website to let you all know, to let people know that are coming out here, how long it's taking in real time. So you know how long it would take to get back or how about it is. And that's really just to manage expectations. We know that, you know, right now, it's probably going to take somebody about six or seven minutes to make it through that span. And if on some of these really busy weekends that we saw this year, you could have come out anytime on a really busy Saturday, and it may have only taken you an additional eight minutes. I think that's a great improvement versus what we were seeing before. And a lot of that is also making sure that you all have access to come and go when you need to from the beach and not feel like you are stuck out here. So I think that's one thing we are focusing on, is giving the residents the ability to move freely, not just within the island, but off of the island. One thing that we, data that we have not had previously is to know how long it takes you to get maybe from a certain point on Fort Pickens back to the light, or a certain point on Via de Luna back to the light. So we now have some Bluetooth devices that we can install to start gathering that data. And then that way, we can start focusing on, on those that are either trying to get off the island or move around within the island. Another change that we've already made this year recently was changing the pedestrian signal on Pensacola Beach Boulevard. We reduced the crossing time for the flashing from 30 seconds to 21. And we also added signs that you can proceed when clear, so that when, after the pedestrian had walked in with a car, if it was, if it was clear, you were clear to go, and you didn't need to sit there and continue to hold up traffic. So before, when somebody would press the button to walk across, the lights would flash for 30 seconds. And we saw in our studies that people would wait for the flashing to end before they proceeded. And so we reduced the amount of time that it flashes from 30 to 21. And then we also added signs that they, they were able to proceed once the crosswalk was clear, so they wouldn't have to wait for the pedestrian to walk all the way across the street. If it was clear, they could proceed. And now some of the projects that we're, we're looking to do this off-season, and I think that's the important part. I will start off by saying that this might take a little bit longer, but this is a project that's been in the works for a long time, and I know Dr. Campanella's been working on it a long time with the Island Authority, and that's the access road from what is in front of Laguna's and down through the Quiet Water connecting, connecting those areas. So this was, again, a project that was, was in the works before I came on, and we're finally starting to see it come to fruition this off-season. It'll be two lanes. It'll be an access road adjacent to 399. And this is, is really to help people from making a left turn out of, if you've visited the Grand Marlin or something like that, and go further down and not have to make that left turn. We all know how, how difficult that is. We're also going to have a sidewalk that's, that's part of the project to make sure that, that we're focusing on that. One of the things I want to say is, as with all these projects we're about to go through, we're trying to just do a better job of managing the space that's already here and being a better way to, to use it. And we think that it will actually have some great improvements for, for everybody out here. Christine's background is in multimodal, and so we are looking at public transportation, vehicular, pedestrian, all, all the ways. And so one of the things that she thought we could do is, is do a better job of informing everybody of the different modes that we have out here. So of course, we have the beach trolley that's free for anyone to use once you get on the beach. And we are also looking at possibly expanding those dates and times that it would be included. One of the, I think it is, one of the things that we're also going to be doing is getting more information on the ridership, how many people, where they get off, things like that, so that we can try to improve that. Some of you are probably familiar with the free other beach shuttles, golf carts that are, that are around. And then for anybody who doesn't want to bring your car in from the mainland, we do have the ferry services that are, that have started. But, so it's really just a marketing campaign that we can do and, and see what we can do just to promote that, let everybody know what the options are, let our visitors know that, you know, maybe you don't need to take your car to Quiet Water Beach in the evening. You can, you can grab the trolley. And we want to make sure that the service of those is not impacted by anything we do, so something we're keeping in mind. I think one of the things we've also heard from comments is, is parking is an issue. And right now, we have 14 public parking lots on the beach that equal a little over 3,100 spaces. Casino Beach, just in that main parking area as it currently exists, has 1,252 spaces. When Christine looked at the layout, she thought that if we just changed the striping and made, instead of having two-way directional traffic with a 90-degree spot, we can make it one-way with a 60-degree or 45-degree parking, and that would save us enough space where we could add a whole nother lane of parking. And so we're looking at adding over 120 spaces just by re-striping the parking lot. And so we know how much money that has been spent on creating parking, and to be able to do this for just the cost of striping is, I think, an excellent source of the parking that's already out here, a great source, a great use of funds, but more importantly, opening up over 120 parking spots on Pensacola Beach right before. As I said, she's also about multimodal, and so we know how much, how many of you like to walk and ride your bikes? And so we want to re-stripe Bob Sykes Bridge to include a protected pet and bike lane. And then this way, you can get across the bridge safely, and now that you only have two lanes in front of the toll plaza, you're not going to have somebody try to cut you off as you've just gotten off the bridge. And, and so we think this is important for pedestrian safety. And of course, I don't know how many of you have gone on the new three-mile bridge, but that opened recently, and that's amazing pedestrian access to get from Pensacola to Gulf Rees. And if you haven't done it, there's still a little bit of work to be done with getting some shade structures and some of the lookout areas, but once it's completed, it'll look really great. We also want to improve the bike. I apologize. So this is what the protected bike lane would look like going across Bob Sykes Bridge. It's a little windy, and so I'm trying to hold my papers here so I can see what I'm doing, and I apologize for this, but, but we, right now, we do have the width as it currently stands to, to just, again, some, some striping would allow us to create this bike and pedestrian access safely. We also want to improve safety along 399, and that is markings with striping along Pensacola Beach, southbound from the Marina to the Frisky Dolphin. As we can see in this upper right-hand picture, a lot of vehicles, in this case, a truck, probably don't know that this is a pedestrian access and that it needs to stay open. So again, these are just improving the markings in this area to indicate that this is a pedestrian-friendly Another thing we think we can, we want to do is reconfigure the Fort Pickens Road approach. Again, this is just some re-striping, so a better use of the space that we already have, and this would be beneficial to the cars that are coming out of Casino Beach. And it provides more storage for Fort Pickens Road. What we look to do is to eliminate the, the speed-up lane that's right there in front of the hotel, and have that just be the left-turn lane. We would also have the, this is David with our, our media group, he's making sure that we're all live for Facebook, and everybody can see us, and, all right. Thank you, Dave. So what we would do through striping and maybe some turtles is give the people that are, that are in the outside lane, I would say furthest east exiting Casino Beach, to have a little bit more of a right-of-way as they exit. And then as they do that, of course, the cars from Fort Pickens would be able to move through. There would be a little bit of a merge after the protected area ends, to where the cars that have, have turned into the right lane would, would merge over to get in the left lane to turn left, and then the cars that are coming down Fort Pickens, if they want to go on, on Via de Luna or across into the Quiet Water parking lot, would, there'd be a period of merging. But again, giving this protected area to, to the cars exiting the beach parking lot, we think would, would again help the traffic flow within the, within the parking lot, and then also cars that are coming down Fort Pickens. As we know, that the Sheriff's Department has to get involved sometimes because the cars coming down Fort Pickens don't want to let anybody out of the parking lot, and that it can take 30 minutes to get out of the parking lot. So we are trying to make that flow a little bit better. And so as I said, as I get into more of the projects that are coming up, I might have Christine come up and say something, but Christine, is there anything you want to add on this one?
I just wanted to reiterate that we're...
I'm going to have you come over to the, to the bikes so they can...
Just to reiterate what the Commissioner said, that we're trying to utilize the space that's out there better. And the plan is not to widen anything, but basically re-stripe. As you come from Margaritaville to Fort Pickens, I mean, along Fort Pickens and make that curve, right now, it's kind of confusing. The left lane has a left-turn arrow to get into South Harbor, and then an acceleration lane. So the intent is basically that you would have, you would stay in your lane, and it would be less confusing than having to think you're turning left and getting back over, if that makes sense. So it's trying to clean that up, so you have two continuous lanes along Fort Pickens. And then we actually have a good bit of asphalt to the east of that to be able to utilize to create more efficiencies for people exiting the parking lot. So this plan is basically just re-striping that area so that we can test to see if we can get more efficiency out of the space that exists.
And I would say that the, those coming out of the surface stand would still be able to make a left out of there. With the speeds of vehicles that are coming down Fort Pickens, the, the accent, I mean, the acceleration lane isn't as necessary as it would be for a higher speed. As you know, it's, it's a little confusing there right now. You've got that straight arrow, which I'd, I'd say is in the middle lane, which is actually a left-turn lane. So people think that they need to get in the left turn in the surface stand, and then they merge again. So we're just making it a little bit more clear and making it easier to navigate the The other thing I had asked them to talk about is, is extending the, the right-turn lane onto Fort Pickens off of Pensacola Beach Boulevard. I want to start off by saying Gulf Power is going to be doing some work in the area through the end of the year or early next year, so there was nothing we could really do before then because they're going to be working in the right-of-way. But again, using the existing asphalt we have now, we want to rebuild it just to make sure that there's any confusion with the lines that are already there and re-stripe it. We think we can extend this right-turn lane by 800 feet. If, in our study during Memorial Day weekend on Saturday, May 23rd, during the peak hour between 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m., we had 581 cars turn right at that intersection, which is, on this day, it was 36% for that hour. So almost one in three cars historically is what turns right on a Fort Pickens, and so doing a little bit of math, we think every time the, the light would extend beyond that point, it's about 38 cars that would be able to turn right extra. That would save them from being queued in that area or backing up. I understand that, you know, days like today during the week in the off-season, that's, that's not something that's going to be very beneficial. We don't have the issue, but when the traffic does back up at the light, it would allow, I said roughly, 38 cars to go ahead and not sit in the queue and go with a, with a relatively inexpensive, inexpensive milling and restructuring. As I said also earlier, the, the access road along 399 is going to help, but another, actually, I think it was a suggestion that we got, and you looked into it, and we said that we don't have a U-turn lane along 399, Pensacola Beach Boulevard. And so just north of where the left-turn lane is into the Grand Marlin after the toll, we could, we could put a U-turn area that would allow cars that are either making a right turn out of Grand Marlin or further down the beach to come up and U-turn. So this is, this is also a safer way to, to turn, to go southbound. And, and so as we can see lately, that, again, if you've gone to Grand Marlin or Laguna's, that it backs up with people trying to turn left. You don't have much room to turn left. You have to, some, you have to go across the cars that are leaving the beach. Sometimes you have somebody turning, turning in, so to navigate all that, you could make a right turn a lot easier and then just pull up and make it a U-turn. I think managing the light and knowing that it moves a lot better, hopefully you all are seeing that too, that it's, it may not be frowned upon. You're not going to feel that, that you're adding a lot of time just by going up a few extra hundred feet to make a U-turn. More, more importantly though, this is a safer way to make that left turn from the parking lots on the east side of Pensacola Beach Boulevard. So I've gone through the eight projects that we want to do this off-season, and again, except with the, with the construction of the access road, which we are pushing that whichever contractor we choose to do it in a very condensed timeframe to be finished by summer. We're working on that. But these are the eight that I just discussed. We're also evaluating ECAT service for our service employees that are out here on the beach, for our maids and waitstaff, to be able to have bus routes that are, are better suited for what they need, and then also if visitors want to use it, along with the trolley upgrades that I also mentioned. For the Casino Beach parking lot, we're looking at spark parking options to let people know how many spots are available and, in that regard. That is our best spot to do it because we currently have a one-way-in, one-way-out design, and so that, that is conducive to metering or counting cars and knowing how many spots we should have in there. And then we're also looking at holistically the pedestrian and, and walkability of essentially from the bridge through the port. And again, that's Christine's background, and we just want to make it a better experience for the residents and visitors. You know, right now, we don't have the path ends at the, at the traffic light if you're, if you're on Fort Pickens, I mean, on, on Via de Luna. And so getting that connected on the, on the east side of Pensacola Beach Boulevard, all the way up to what we're doing right now with the access road, and then continuing on through the, the protected area on Bob Sykes Bridge. And then I'd also heard from a, a number of residents regarding crosswalks on, especially And then I'd also heard from a number of residents regarding crosswalks on, especially Via de Luna. And so I asked our engineering department to do a study, and I'm actually going to let the professionals talk a little bit about the findings that they had with the study.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you guys for having me. Of course, again, I'm Christine Fancy, I'm your new Transportation Engineer in the Engineering Department. The Commissioner reached out earlier this spring and said that there were some requests to review the crosswalks along Via de Luna. So I went out and basically did an inventory that is shown here of the nine marked crosswalks and six unmarked crosswalks between Avenue 11 and 23. We have three types of crosswalks out there. We have unmarked, obviously, that there's no markings. Then we have marked, that have the white stripes and the yellow pedestrian signs. And then the highest visibility ones are the ones right behind us here at 17th Avenue that connect the fire station and the school. That also include the high-visibility ladder in the crosswalk, as well as the stop-ahead bars and the stop-ahead signs. So that gives the greatest visibility. So those are the three levels that we have existing. So the way that we warrant if pedestrian crossing is necessary is there's four warrants that need to be met in order to justify that crossing and that investment in infrastructure and make sure that it's safe for everyone. The first one is looking at if there are significant generators on either side of that crosswalk, with the destinations on both sides. Of course, in this case, the beautiful beach is our big destination, but is there enough people on the other side of Via de Luna? The second is looking obviously at the crash history and seeing if we have issues with people getting hurt or people crashing as they're trying to cross the street. The third is looking at the spacing, if there's enough, if there's too much spacing between the crossings. And then the fourth is looking at the pedestrian demand itself, and going in the field and finding out. So we can basically go in the field and do pretty much the significant generators and the distance. We have crash data available to us that I can pull online. And then we went out and we did a pedestrian count, actually it turned out to be the busiest day this summer as far as traffic through the toll, and that was Saturday, June 13th, gorgeous day on our beach. And here I show basically the outcomes of that survey. We counted between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM, which is an informed time of when people go to the beach. And you can see here that between Avenue 11 and 23, we only had two crossings that had more than 20 people in one hour. And per National Guidance, you have to meet that 20 in order to mark a crosswalk. And you can see that even the marked that exist, such as, excuse me, 12, Avenue 12, we had four people cross in one hour in that marked crosswalk. So you can see that we have kind of an inconsistent number of people crossing, but the two primaries that we saw were 18, let me make sure, yes, 18 and 22. Is that right? 23, excuse me, that met that 20. And both of those are actually marked, fours already. So when we review kind of all four factors together, looking at those major generators and attractors, the major generator, it seems to me, obviously other than the beach, is our school on the south side, which we already have the high visibility in this location. The vehicle crashes, we pulled, there's zero fatalities, which is fabulous, but we had four injury crashes over the last three years, and those all happened around the school, honestly. And so we already have the high visibility there. The other thing is looking at the number of crossings in that distance. There's actually a significant number of crossings in that stretch, and so there's not, there is availability to cross the street. And then the fourth thing was meeting that 20 in one hour. And like I mentioned, we only had two, and that was Avenue 18 and 23, and both of those are currently marked crosswalks. So the outcome of this study was kind of just to leave it as is and continue to watch and make sure that we don't have any major crashes and make sure that it's safe for everyone. We believe that the current condition works, and we'll continue to keep our eye on it. That's all I had, but I just wanted to, before we go into question and answer, just say that I, because I just got here about six months ago, I'm really excited to hear from you tonight. And I brought my aerial and my big notepad, so I'd love after the meeting, after the Q&amp;A, if you could meet me over there and share your ideas. Also, I would love for you to fill out a comment card before you leave so that I can take your comments back with me, and we can think of more ideas, like the Commissioner mentioned, of how we can improve transportation on the beach. So thank you.
And as I was standing up to the side, I noticed we have a lot of staff here, and I would like to recognize some of them because they are new, and some of you know them, so in no particular order, we have, actually, Jim, if you want to stand up, you might get a round of applause. Jim's the one that manages the traffic light on the weekends. So he has been very helpful in the last year and a half of managing that and working his weekends and so that we could manage the light. We have Wes Moreno, who oversees our Public Works, Joy Jones of Engineering, we have, Debbie Bowers is our new Assistant County Administrator, Jason Rogers is our Director of Public Safety. You've got early support from the Fire Department, that's great. And Rob, I'm sorry, I don't know your, I can't read traffic, but you know, we've had some turnover in Engineering, and that's how we got Christine and Rob to join us. Of course, I couldn't do this without my aide Angela Crowley in the back. If anyone's called my office, yes. She is a great help to you all, but she's even more a help to me. Of course, our Community Media Relations Department, Laura Cole and David, who are making this available for everyone to see. David, we have a lot of people watching online right now. So it sounds like we've got a number of people online, so, and making sure I didn't miss anybody else, I think that looks like it, but of course, we have the guys from the fire station here as well, so thank you so much for having us. So we all are, we're here to answer questions about anything else you may have, and I'd go ahead and open the floor to questions about what we talked about or anything else. Charlie?
Howard, I'd just like to commend you and your staff, if they can emotion out of this whole process and coming up with statistics and the reasons to do it. I know you've got a lot of grief, and some of the steps you've done that appeared out to be fantastic, and I think we're on the right track, man.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Again, it was tasking Christine to look at what we can do with what we already have here, and also know that we are committed to continuing to make improvements out here, that just removing cash wasn't the only thing, or just monitoring the light wasn't the only thing. We're looking at other ways that, although they may seem small, we think that if you add them up, it will have an overall impact to the beach.
Is that online?
We will, we can post it. Yep. That's okay, go ahead. Can you, is she going to hand you the mic if you want to hold it, or if you want to...
I know it's an ECAT issue, but we've already asked them, and they basically said they don't have any space to put them. But you're talking about working with ECAT for better transportation for the workers out here. And if you go out there on a hot summer day, you'll see them sitting their way into the bus, you know, with the sun pounding down on them or rain pouring all over them. And I asked, why can't you guys just put them in the same place that we already have the trolley stops where they at least would have a place to sit and shave? And I was told that can't happen because that's not the designated spots. So if you guys can do anything to make things a little bit more comfortable for those people who are working out here for pretty darn low wages, I think that would be helpful.
And Terry, I'm going to interrupt real quick. I do want to commend Public Works for redoing a lot of those. They worked hard when the beach was shut down to make sure that when it reopened, that a lot of the work was done, they didn't have to do it when people were here. So as you guys can all see, a lot of the trolley stops have been redone, so I want to commend them, but I think that is something we can look into, and I'll be happy to take that up.
The other thing is that's been lacking, and I can't, I mean, I'm no engineer, but I can't see how we could do it without taking away parking spaces, but it's, there is no safe access between the start of the parking lot at Avenue 10 on the north side and Paradise. There's nothing. I mean, people are wandering through a parking lot with cars actively backing out into the lot, and I don't know if there's any way to put a safe access in, or use that road that goes behind all those businesses as a bike, pedestrian, but it's just something that's always needed work, and since you guys are tackling all these things, why don't you add it to the mission? And then the only, the last thing I wanted to ask is, I don't think One Day makes a significant dataset for a study for the crosswalks, and I'm telling you, as one of the people that lives out in this section, it's pretty bad. So I know you think there's a lot of crosswalks, but when I went to Sonoma County years ago, like 10, 15 years ago, they had these crosswalks that as soon as you crossed the lane, you know, it would start flashing, and it only flashed when you were in the roadway, and then it stopped. And those would be perfect for out here because when they four-lagged this thing, it turned into a racetrack. And trust me, it's not, the only time it appears to be really policed for speed is after the tourists leave, so I'd really, really like to see something happen out there.
Okay. And we will continue to monitor that. I know it's been something that's been on the minds of the residents in this area, and so it's, Christine, we're not just one and done, but we are, we will continue to monitor that. Liz? Oh, let's hear it.
I would just like to add on to the crosswalk situation, and that is, you're, you know, stats are stats, but you're not out here at 6 o'clock in the morning when those of us who live out here are trying to run, and there are people going 60 miles an hour down Via de Luna, and I'm a big girl, you shouldn't, you know, you should be able to see me at a crosswalk. So I think part of the problem with our crosswalks is we have three different types of crosswalks out here and a very limited amount of space. And I feel for our visitors that come here, the first thing they're introduced to is a crosswalk that has flashing lights. Okay, that's great. That's a no-brainer. Then they come up on a crosswalk that, well, do they stop or they don't stop, and the light's green, but people are in the middle because they jaywalked? So now what happens? So now they're stopping when they shouldn't be stopping, and then they get down here when they should be stopping, and they're not stopping. So I think there's an awful lot of confusion. I live out here, some days I'm like, okay, okay, yeah, you stop at these, you got to wait for the light at this one, and the other one's a no-brainer because it's a blinker. So it'd be nice, and much like Terry said, if we could have one type of crosswalk with one type of instruction to the driver. And you've got to remember, not everybody is from here, and some areas crosswalks are very abided by, and some areas are kind of suggestive. So...
Yeah? What time would you study first? What time would be the best time to study?
I would study throughout the entire day. Yeah, but, you know, and the other thing is just got to, everything is so, I can tell you that when UWF graduates, your, if you came out on May 8th, I think that was their graduation, your statistics would be so blown out of proportion. So I don't, this island is, it's not static, it's dynamic, and it changes from day to day in the weather and the event, and, you know, is it Sunday morning, and they're mortals, are they practicing and taking up one whole lane down Via de Luna? So there's a lot of things out here that if you don't live out here, and you don't see it when you just come out to do a study from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Is it on a Saturday? Would it be Saturday or not?
Terry, would you do it on a Saturday? I mean, I think it's hit and miss.
Yeah, Sunday is Church Day, and you've got, you've got a time in the morning when all the joggers and dog walkers and everybody's out, you've got a time in the evening the same way, a lot of people on this side, they'll be watching the sunset. So you've got, you've got like pockets of times, and I would not necessarily, especially for people who live out here, we sure as heck don't enter out to the beach between 11:00 and 1:00, you know, because you're going to burn yourself to a crisp. So we're out there early. I mean, I don't know about the tourists, I see them setting up at 7:00 AM and they stay out there all day.
Yeah, I was going to say, down where we are, one of you might...
Right. So I was trying to be cognizant of like the money it takes to count the whole Boulevard, and it takes a little bit of money to get everybody out there counting at the same time. So I was just trying to limit that, but would you count? So the other question would be, would you like to focus on, sorry, would you focus on condensing? And right now, we have nine crosswalks. Is you're asked to condense and do higher-quality cross, maybe three high-quality crosswalks instead of having nine?
And I, and then, I think part of it is, is that there are requirements that go into the high-visibility crosswalks. And so, and I know you all probably agree, we already have a lot of signs out here.
We have way too many signs out here.
We have way too many signs. And so in order to do that as required, it would require a lot more, and then also, then do, do drivers become numb to them? If you see one every block, does it have that same effect than if you see it?
Right. Maybe two or three times.
Two or three times.
In that.
And so...
So I'd love to just talk to you more.
Yeah, it's just like I said, the dynamic situation, and the other thing I will tell you this, and it's not so bad in the summer, but it is very bad as we roll into spring and then into the fall, is the crosswalks in what I call the shopping district.
Right.
Okay, so that's by the little gas station and the hotels, are not lit. And so there are certain times of the day when you're coming out and you can't see people, and you are so thankful that, like if I'm coming home, that somebody leaving the island saw and stopped, and I can see their car stopped, so therefore, I can stop. And again, that's a matter of, like you said, is it a high-quality crosswalk, what have you? But there have been, it's not just me driving, I've had other drivers that were, I didn't even see that person, thank God you saw. So it's a tough one out here, but yeah, I don't know if less is more or more is less. So...
I appreciate you acknowledging that it's not an easy mix.
Oh, no, I get that, but I'm just, I'm behind these drivers that don't know what to do.
Right.
And then I'm also in the crosswalk hoping that these drivers stop.
And I think we're also having a challenge. I understand there were some flashing beacons at the location in the core, and that those weren't working, especially for the traffic, the moving cars. And so we took those back, so I think we're willing to try, but then we want to make sure it works.
There's three different types in a very small area.
Do you know why they didn't work?
Tell me.
Because they were, after the ban of the pedestrian, they, pedestrians cannot control traffic, so they can't do that. So all of a sudden, you have to, you have to wait, and if you push the light and you wait, and then that's meters, the ones that you guys had, it would stop the traffic immediately, and it was causing a backup situation.
Thank you.
I agree with what both these ladies have said, but so my only question is, why didn't you do any further study past Avenue 23? Because if you get crosswalks approximately every third of a mile, your next crosswalk isn't until Port Athena. And I've written my other comments down, but why didn't the study go past that?
The concern that I heard was right in the middle here, so we did this section. So I just need to hear from you, and we'll look into it, we'll expand our study. So thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I could, if you're interested in how to use a biking area on the Bob Sykes Bridge, is there a natural physical barrier?
Is there, is there a physical barrier that's going to be put up, or is it just going to be paved?
Do you want to answer that?
Go ahead.
So right now, we have a two-foot shoulder with a yellow stripe, then you have two 11-foot lanes with a white stripe, and then you have nine feet to the barrier. Does that make sense? So the intent was to utilize what we have in that nine feet to create a bike-walk area. So in mine, we would put some kind of delineator, like a vertical delineator. Right. Similar to what they have on the Bay Bridge, something to test, basically, that's inexpensive, we can try it. And then you would have four foot that would be marked with a bike symbol, and then you'd have four foot that would be marked with like a pedestrian symbol, if that makes sense. So you would delineate separating your modes, and we'd have it in both directions. So hopefully you would have space on either side of the bridge to walk or bike. So hopefully you would have space on either side of the bridge to walk or bike.
So it could be something as strong as concrete? That's based periodically, not just a solid line, but something that a car just wouldn't be able to pull into? Or it could be just?
Yeah, we're still evaluating. The concrete barriers are like two, two-and-a-half feet wide, so they would, the space for the pedestrian would be narrowed. So we need to kind of figure out what works best. I'd love your, afterwards, I'd love your input on what you prefer.
I see questions over here.
One of the most dangerous spots is right there where the turn into the strip center, leaving Paradise. I don't know why the stripes, the aggregate stripes have to be so far out and get some kind of a turnpike in it. Because we have to create one anyway, which makes it, which makes it that more dangerous.
Yeah. Okay. And then of course, one other thing I want to say, I see a couple of them here. So I just wanna thank the Turtle Patrol for everything they do. I know that, I think we had the Ford Kem Redley hatch the other day, one of the two nests. I think the other didn't make it, so we hate to hear that. But of course, everyone who's involved out here with the Turtle Patrol, thank you for all that you do. Any other questions? I'm happy to stick around with anything else anybody would like to ask. I just, yep?
We've had a lot of complaints here about, I think, on the only your footprint Facebook page that a lot of us that are interested in the Turtles have been trying to contribute to it. And we're getting a lot of complaints from all up and down the beach, but particularly between like the Holiday and nearer the core, in that area by Beach Club and up into Avenue 10 to 13, of people just leaving tons of trash. And for some reason, this year, there is not as much of the tents and chairs and things like that that are being left online being picked up. So, I mean, I know there's been some concern about having vehicles out there with the proper lighting after dark. But I don't, you know, if we actually follow the ordinance, you don't have to be out there that much after dark to pick this stuff up. You don't have to be out there at 10 or 11 o'clock at night. So I don't know what's changed, but what we're being told has changed is that people are complaining so they're not picking stuff up. That's, that's the unofficial word.
Sure. And we, I talked with Public Works about this two weeks ago when there was, or last week when there was the issue. I know we're also seeing a little bit more holes for a stretch there. We have a lot of green flag days, which are great for people that wanted to go swimming in the Gulf. But talking with the lifeguards, they don't usually patrol the beach on green flag days to really reduce the amount of motorized traffic on the beach. And so sometimes there's interactions that they would have with guests that have dug a hole that didn't even occur. So I know we have some big holes that we had to take care of. But in talking with Public Works, we are still, we have not suspended or stopped picking things up. And so in my discussions that I had last week, I said we really need to focus and put the pressure on this. As we know, we were in the middle of turtle hatching season and we wouldn't want anything to get snagged and anything got behind. But really we want to enforce that all the time.
Robert, for the elephant in the room, we're on a narrow island and the traffic parking continues to be a problem. We keep putting the Band-Aids on, we're doing a good job putting Band-Aids on, but we're getting more and more popular every day. Is anybody gonna get behind putting some kind of a three, four, or five-story parking garage in Casino Parking Lot with retail around the outer rim, with two restaurants on top, Lee's Beef's coming in? Hey, luxury parking, luxury parking. Is anybody seriously looking at that?
We are looking at it, or at least a parking garage. When you start adding the retail and everything, now you're having to create more parking for those establishments. So those are some of the things that we're looking in the mid to longer term of our plan. What I presented tonight was really the short term and the short to mid that we think we can do. But that's one of the things Christine is looking at, is, yeah. We're looking at a single-story parking garage on Casino Beach and see what that would look like. Right. And what it could, it could hold. But again, as I said, when she came in and said we could add 120 parking spots by just changing the striping, I realized how big that is. You know, we also know that, as I said, that the parking on, in the Quiet Water area is the first to fill up. One of the things we noticed, and I know that tendencies have changed a little bit with what's going on this year. But we've been noticing that Casino Beach Parking Lot is not filling up until 1:30, based on that, on having that camera on the last few weeks. But again, parking is a big issue. This is something that we can implement this off-season and add 120-plus parking spots. But we will continue to look at alternatives to add even more.
Is there gonna be anything left of Morgan Park when we get to it?
There is. So that was something that was worked out before I came in. And any impact to Morgan Park is being given back to the south. So the same square footage of the park will remain. There's also, I think, one or two trees near the entrance that our arborist has said that we cannot get within a certain radius of during construction and to preserve those trees, and so we're gonna do that as well. And so we were gonna have as little impact to Morgan Park as we can. We did have to have 12-foot lanes on those access roads because part of, part of what doing the access roads is that it will allow the trolleys to use them. And we realized that anything less than 12 feet, the mirrors could knock as the trolleys went by. And then that, it's also a way that the delivery trucks and even the small semis and things like that would be using. So we need to make sure that they have enough room to traverse. But yes, we are mindful of Morgan Park.
Can you say a little bit about whether we have any kind of a funding mechanism in place to replace Bob Sykes Bridge? It's not a state highway anymore. I don't know why we did that. So we're not gonna get any help from the state, I don't think. Do we have a mechanism that we started or will start to do that? We just did the six million or whatever we did to give, six, four years' life, but still, it's inevitable that we're gonna have to replace it.
It is. So we have about 15 years after we do this, finish this project. I know a lot of you have seen them working on it recently. And of course, that's, if we don't maybe have any major hurricanes hit it or it deteriorates quicker than that. Right now, we don't have a funding source set up. We have about $6 million in the reserve account. And some of that is being used, had already been allocated to be used for the access road. So when we spend that, I think it's about 1.8% or so, that's being taken out of that. So we're looking at about a $4 million reserve for a new bridge in 15 or 20 years. In the last year and a half, any chance I've had to talk in Tallahassee or talk in DC with our representatives, I'll bring that up with our FDOT partners on what they can do. It is an off-system bridge, it's a county-owned bridge. We wanted the proceeds from it so that we could pay for the widening of Via de Luna and we've used it for a host of other things over the years. When I came in, I wanted to reduce that, using that as a slush fund. And use it to build a reserve, to build a bridge so that when the time comes, that hopefully we can find some matching dollars and have some dollars to actually put behind it. But I know there's a lot of talk about why we haven't taken the toll away. And that's the reason, is that we have this looming elephant, a huge spend. Again, I think as Christine has come in, you know, there was talk about maybe making it a three-lane bridge each direction. And as she said, it would, it would turn into a Speedway, much like what happened when we took Via de Luna into four lanes. So that's still some time off, but it's a discussion we start having and start saving that money. And so I'm doing what I can to, and have been watching what comes out of that account.
In your opinion, are we getting our share? It doesn't appear to be, but are we getting our share of Triumph Fund? Do we have enough influence on that board where we can get some projects done for infrastructure?
Well, we can't really do infrastructure. It's economic development.
Whatever, relative.
But we need to do a better job putting this forward, some projects. We, I think we might have one economic development project that we can, we can go to Triumph and ask. They can't do infrastructure for economic development, but we need to do a better job of putting forward projects. We need to start spending that money for the residents of Escambia County and, and we need to do a better job doing that. But I do think that the right logic comes along with the right, right return that I don't think we should have an issue getting that funding from the Triumph Board.
Commissioner Bender, my first question is, was this meeting here just to talk about the pedestrians moving around the island and/or improvements on the roads? Or can we bring up other items?
You're welcome to bring up anything else.
We brought up the speed. I don't want any more speed limit signs, but there's people speeding here on this road and on the avenues and also on Via de Luna. That when you're walking down the road and you hear a car coming and it's doing 40 and 50 miles an hour down there, I reckon I'm asking if there's any way that you could ask the Escambia County sheriffs to utilize some speed guns here and slow down. You really see it on the Saturdays when everybody's coming in and everybody's checking out. They wanna get in as fast as they can and they wanna get out as fast as they can.
I'd be happy to have that conversation with Lieutenant.
That issue was brought up about the speed. The other one, there's also trash on the beach. I know you can't stop the people that come to this beach from walking and not putting their trash in the receptacles. And/or when they're leaving their cars, they dump their trash out. But the other generator that I see is houses that are here that sleep 20 and 30 people and they have one trash can and they only have one day that they pick up the trash. So on Saturday mornings, these people put all their garbage out there and they surround their trash cans on Saturday. But the ordinance is you can only put your trash out 24 hours before pickup. So there's 48 hours there with garbage cans that are overflowing. And on certain stormy days, the trash goes everywhere. So the residents are tasked to pick it up because there is nobody else other than when you see the Island Authority people coming by and trying to pick it up. So if there was any possible way that we could help try to pass an ordinance that if you, your rental house or mini hotel or whatever you wanna call it out here, that they should be mandated to have the Friday pickups so the garbage isn't there when the Saturday people are checking in. And to have a sufficient enough cans to, if you can sleep 40 people and you got two cans there, 40 people here for seven days are gonna generate more than one or two trash cans. I've discussed it with Escambia County guy that when you complain about people just have their cans are out the street 24/7, you could only complain about four locations at a time. People not coming to do five or six. I've asked, just drive down here on a Wednesday, drive this beach instead of can't do it, I'm too busy. So the trash that the beach generates, a lot of it is generated here in this area because of all the rental locations. Those are the two things I see that are, that are near in my heart is the people that speed down my avenue and they hit fourth gear just coming off of Via de Luna to get the Areola and/or Vicerosa to get to where they're going. And then just walking the beach in the trash. On Saturdays, just come out here on a Saturday morning during spring break or anytime during, during the summer. And/or if you know that there's a wedding or anything, it is just crazy. This is a natural resource that we should be trying to preserve instead of letting it. Before it was, early, you know, a couple of years ago, it's plastic straws. Now it's masks. So I'm just asking for help. I've only been back here for four years living on the beach and it is just an eyesore to me for people to come in here and see it.
Yeah, I think Tom heard that and I think we can work with Island Authority about making sure that there's sufficient number of cans for the operation that's occurring in these residences. And I know that's a whole nother story. And actually, with COVID going on and the governor pushing back the reopening of short-term rentals onto the counties, I think it's time that we push back a little bit and try to, to make some better rules and regulations. I know the PBA looked at some of those that our neighbors to the east have done and see what we can implement here to make this better for everybody. Also, in terms of speeding, we know that, I mentioned it to Lieutenant yesterday, we actually don't have the speed limit signs posted through a lot of these neighborhoods in here. So we're getting those installed, but there is the uniform code of, if it's not posted, what speed limit is. For those of you that don't know, I believe there is still a petition going on back here to get speed bumps installed here. And if the neighbors on the south wanted to do that, to look into getting some speed bumps put in, we can, our office can help with that process. It is a petition requirement to do, but we'd be happy to help you look into that. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming out. Appreciate you coming out there this evening and taking time. I did have a question, one to do with the recreation plant. Is there anything in the works about maybe getting that recreation plant relocated off of the beach? With any BP money or is there anything in the works to keep dumping, keep dumping it through?
Yeah. I know I've had those discussions. I think that would be great if we could do it. I think Navarre just ended up, is in the process of removing theirs. That would take some great work with the ECUA to manage that. And I think it's something we could look at to really, to really do. I know the concern is, of course, piping it under the sound. And if some of the liability or what can happen if there was a break and so. But I have that conversation with the ECUA.
And I guess, and then I have another question, it's kind of a topic we've been on, but it has to do with the leases in this neighborhood that we're at right now, which we've talked about several times. This is all a single-family dwelling neighborhood and Airbnb is taking it over. People are turning their garages into an apartment, turning a single house into duplexes. And the Island Authority is doing absolutely nothing to prevent it. They may even be promoting it to the best that I can see, but if they're looking the other way and allowing these people to do it. Every time you turn around, you got one house, it's now two houses. There's something twice as many people in here all the time. What's the county plan on that to get some kind of revenue? I don't think you're getting a dime from these people and the taxpayers. Like we've given them 100% homestead exemption when they're trying to live in part of their house, like the upstairs, and turning the bottom part into a full-time rental. That's a duplex under county code, I believe, isn't it? Under our, it's not a single family, this is all single-family dwelling neighborhood. What are you doing to address that?
Well, I know in some of the ones that we've talked about, we've had building inspections out to see if they've done unlicensed, unpermitted work. You also have the fire code that they need to abide by. As I said though, the state has preempted us a lot in just the terms of Airbnbs and short-term rentals. But I think there are some, I think Flagler's done one that we could try to mirror a little bit. That would at least put some parameters around those. So those are what we're trying to address with them. I would say we would, we are doing what we can.
So if it's purely advertised as a duplex where they live up above and we have leases out there that say single-family dwelling, is that even Airbnb, truck, standard, the Island Authority and counties for a regular? Does it get to those?
And I would, again, is it a duplex? It's, you know, the short-term rental in saying that you can have those leases in your home?
No, it's a duplex. We have single-family dwelling, we have duplexes, and we have duplexes out there now. So who is controlling that? Is it the county? It's not the Island Authority. Is it, who's, who's running the store here?
You know, I think it's something that we can work on the Island Authority with. Again, we've looked to see in some of the leases, the language in those. That is a lease-by-lease basis, if they even allow rentals in a neighborhood or in the lease. And so then in terms of also the TDC collection, that is on the clerk's side. We did just spend some money for the property praiser to data mine- The, we did just spend some, uh, money for the property appraiser to, uh, data mine information to see if people are either planning homestead when they, when they don't have it, um, and, and other things that they're operating. Uh, I know you talked about that the percentage recently changed and I haven't had a chance to talk with the property appraiser about that, but, um, that was part of it was to see, uh, from a property appraiser standpoint, if people are, are, uh, using it as a short-term rental.
I can tell you my experience today with, uh, the Scamia County. I've been on my street on Avenue to 15, there in the process of, uh, turning a house into a duplex. And I reported to Scamia County because I've reported other incidents to, to Center of the Island Authority and they don't do anything. So I get more response out of, uh, Scamia County. And not, nothing was happening. So I called and talked to the inspector today and the inspector told me that, uh, that he'd been out there and he had put a sign on the, uh, the door, a stop work door. And I said, well, and he told me the date and I said, well, they haven't stopped construction since they, uh, since you put the sign on there. He said, well, I have been back and I've knocked on the door, but they don't come to the door, so there's nothing more that I can do, you know, until I can get into the building and talk to them. So there, it's kind of like your hands are tied. They're continuing construction. There's no, it does not seem to be any way that you can stop them.
Let me, let me get some information on that and then, and after this, I'll look into it and, um, the county, Assistant County Administrator will, will help me on that as well.
One last then?
Yep.
Long-term?
Long-term.
What defines what a single-family house is? Here are a special types of...
They make all kinds of rules. They don't enforce any of them, but they make all kinds of rules. Can't we make a rule that defines what a single-family house is? Because honestly, I don't think a 10-bedroom, 10-bathroom house is a single-family house under any way, stretch or form. And when you, when you have a house and you talk about lease restrictions, we have lease restrictions in my neighborhood. People still short-term rent. It's right on the lease. You know, we had to, and, and we had to sue, we had to, we had to force the Island Authority to file suit against one of our neighbors because they haven't done anything in the last 15 years, so why would they do it now? And, and, and I don't think it's an unfair position to put us in to police our own neighborhood.
The Island Authority has followed out, they've worked...
To level the playing field, hotels and the bed taxes going up, why can't we use in other counties, I, I understand that other counties, and it's a functional software, when they're using, when they're booking, they're, they're using Zalpott, Airbnb and VRBOs, why can't we collect tax on that by the, by the function of the software and earmark that for something such as the Bob Sykes Bridge or something like, uh, bed taxes that are earmarked?
Uh, I know the, the clerk was, was working with some of those, uh, vendors that did short-term leasing and, and, uh, I think those talks have currently stalled. Um, it's, uh, it's amazing how private that information is.
Yeah, we can't consult with other counties that are doing it successfully.
We, we, I mean, we can. And then that's part of that, it's that same program that the property appraiser used, um, was to make sure that everyone's, uh, that those that are renting are, are paying. And, and so hope to get that information into the clerk's hands after the property appraiser does it, but, um, but yes, it was, uh, we did actually use some of the TDC money on our shortfall for the Bob Sykes Bridge repair. We were, I think, 1.2 million short off of what we had budgeted. We, uh, Administrator Gilli, when she came in, found about 600,000, uh, in, in various projects or, or available funds in, in, in LOSD. And, and then we did use, uh, I think 680 from, uh, TDC money for, for that. And if there are any other questions, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I'm glad it turned out to be a, a beautiful evening. I appreciate, uh, you all, uh, pushing it back two days, of course. Um, I know some of you were probably busy preparing for what could have been and, and I wanted to be mindful of, of preparating preparations that you all were taking and, and also what was expecting to be, uh, an event for us here. So, uh, thank you all for joining us on, on Facebook and, and I'll be around after if you have any other questions or comments. And thank you so much.